Festerson, Gurnat, Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson is absent. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing by and for our invocation by Councilmember Chris Gaines.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just thought those would be two thoughts that might be appropriate for us to think about.
City Clerk Certified Publication Data Record Official Newspaper on December 9th in North Shore Prec Council and Regular City Council Meeting December 13th, 2016. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of the Legislative Chamber.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Mr. Clerk?
Zoning ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 72nd Dodge Street from general commercial district and community commercial district to community commercial district. Property is also located within an existing ACI 268 overlay District A. Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today, also is Bruce Carpenter of HDR. We're simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item five, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Jovan, I thought I'd just give you a chance, if you want, or if Mr. Carpenter would like to speak to this. I've done us the work underway already, and presume the build out there for additional parking is an indicator of the success due spaces having, and I know that by reading their recent reports and annual materials, that they've been very pleased with the use from the community and how that's going, if you want to talk about that for a minute.
I think that's correct. I have had not as much involvement probably as Bruce has. I don't know, Bruce can add to that, but I know that they have been wildly successful there and that this parking will assist people in being able to show up and use the place. So with that, I'll ask Bruce if he has anything to add, but I know that it has been very successful.
Bruce Carpenter, HDR 8404 Indian Hills Drive. Just briefly, it has been, I think, a great asset for the community and probably exceeded expectations on the attendance and the use by really all ages in the community. And parking was a concern from the start, and if you go by there, parking's typically full, and so this will help increase the attendance, I think.
That's great. Yeah, I've noticed when I drive by there, it is always full, which is good.
Yeah.
I think it has exceeded expectations, so I appreciate your work, and seconded motion.
No further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item five. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Five is passed six to zero. Item number six, resolution that preliminary platent titled "The Villas of Piney Creek Replat One Located East of 204th Street and North of Blondo Parkway" is hereby accepted. Preparation final plat of subdivision is hereby authorized. State Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer, here to answer any questions regarding this final plat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second?
Moving to second to approve item six. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Six is adopted, six to zero. Liquor, item number seven, Hotel Deco 15, 1504 Harney Street, Class C liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Matt Corso, Superiorum Hotel Group, 1504 Harney Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Rich Pauls approved.
Moving to second to approve item seven, Mr. Pauls.
I have a question.
Come with me.
I do like to go to your family, but that restaurant was open for a while. Can you get a seat up there?
Yeah, so construction is underway already. We've kind of halted for a little bit as we're trying to finalize the idea behind concept and menus. Those should be end of this week, end of next, and then from there, construction will start again as soon as we know floor plans and layouts and all that good stuff. So moving along, beginning of April is our timeframe to be reopened in that space.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item number seven. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seven is adopted, six to zero. Item number eight, River City Saloon, 1802 Vinton Street, Class C liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Louis Sedina, 2902 South 16th, River City Saloon.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish, did you want to acknowledge, did you want to?
No, my name is Amparo Monte, Amparo Sedina, his wife.
Okay.
At River City Saloon too.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnat?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thanks, Mr. and Mrs. Sedina, for coming down today. And we had talked last week on the phone, and as you both know, the history that I'm quite familiar with on that corner, born and raised at 20th and Vinton, and having a lot of knowledge of 1802 Vinton over the years since I was a little boy, is, and every business along Vinton Street is very important with the revitalization of that neighborhood. And there's a huge City of Omaha and neighborhood initiative that's going on called the Deer Park Revitalization Initiative. And of course, River City Saloon sits right smack dab in the middle of Vinton Street and what's been happening with that initiative. And we certainly, when I talked to you, you were certainly aware of that, and I know that this is a change in ownership. John had it before, is that correct?
But my mom and my dad and the John.
Yep. And before I, you know, I'm just curious, do you still have your classic Chevys?
Yes, I do.
Oh, have you seen this guy's classic cars that he has? I think if he takes care of the bar like he does the cars, there's going to be a change up there. Because it had, for a good number of years, a poor history with maybe some bad practices and some questionable patrons that were there. Tell the council what you've done and what you're going to put in place to change that atmosphere.
Well, our clientele is a lot better than it was. We got a lot of the streetwalkers going up and down, pounding on the windows and stuff. We've kind of toned that down and, you know, everything's getting better.
And also, we doing like, the bar is like a neighbor, like the people that go there is like our own family. And for be happy they come into the bar every Christmas, Thanksgiving, and the people then got nothing, a place to eat or whatever. I cook for them. And it's free for the people because they appreciate what it helps to us do. We doing a lot of fixing and a lot of, it's like a family bar. It's, we working a lot in the bar.
Well, to me, that sounds great. And I know when I had mentioned questionable practices, and you mentioned that you cook for them. Just promise us that you won't be chaining a barbecue grill up to the stop sign out in front of the place, okay?
No, I cook in my house and I bring the, we doing good.
And I visit, it was probably about a month ago, I was in there on what they call Friday Two.
Yes.
Where the businesses along Vinton Street come together with a variety of specials at the galleries, the restaurants, and River City as well. And a lot cleaner. That's where I got my start as a little boy, learning how to keep things clean and keep things presentable. Everything has its place and everything's in its place. And I see that coming back.
Yes.
So, and this, since this being a change in the partnership, I try to give everybody new or beginning one chance. So this is yours. I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Moving to second to approve item eight. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Nine is adopted, six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Taipei Asian, 2859 South 168th Street, Class C liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Merrick. Address is 14240 U Street in Millard.
I'm Deanna Merrick, Don's wife.
Thank you. You're just here to answer questions that we might have?
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Moving to second to approve item nine. There are no lights. Roll call. Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Nine is adopted, six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Taipei Asian, 2859 South 168th Street, Class C liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President and Council, Michael Roberry and Kenneth Chang, on behalf of Taipei Asian, 2859 South 168th Street, here to answer any questions, and if I may approach President.
Yes, did you want it for the clerk or?
This is for the council, but if I didn't do it, one of the owners would.
Okay, if you can give it to the clerk, she'll make sure we get it.
Yes, you have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Contingent?
Contingent, I'm.
Proper prints?
Proper.
They're moved and seconded to approve item 11. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
11 is approved, contingent on their proper permits, six to zero. Item number 12 is Anderson Standard Service, 2630 South 140th Street. Request permission for a reconstruction of their present package, liquor license, location, and they're requesting an amendment to change the DBA to Anderson's Food Shop.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Correct. Ray Anderson, 17605 Rig Street, here representing as an owner of the business.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
We have an amendment. Move the amendment first. Thank you.
The amendment has been moved and seconded for item number 12. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
12 is adopted, is amended, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council, me, cause, and I have placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were moved, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda, the public hearings on agenda items numbers 13 through 18 were held on December 6, 2016.
To approve.
Moving to second to approve. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
13 through 18 are passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 19 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Here's somebody.
Agenda item number 26. My name is Kevin Hyde. I'm the treasurer of the Omaha Hawks RC Club. My address is 15442 Seward Street. I'd like to thank the City of Omaha for supporting the Omaha Hawks in the management of the Hawk Field. We have a relationship that started back in 1986, and they very successfully provided a high-quality flying field. Members, membership has varied from 250 to 120 people per year, and since 1990, we've had over 1,300 people in the club. The Omaha Hawks have a Labor Day Air Show each year, in which we give thousands of dollars to Make-A-Wish. We also have thousands of people as spectators. Since the inception of Make-A-Wish Foundation of Nebraska, we've donated over $64,000. We also sponsor youth activities through Boy Scouts and sponsorship of AMA magazines to local high schools. And in connection with the AMA, we established an AMA charter in 2006, and we recently celebrated 10 years as an AMA Gold Club, one of only 140 in the United States and the only one in Nebraska. All this has been made possible with the relationship with the City of Omaha, and with the approval of this amendment or this agreement, we hope to have a similar relationship over the next 30 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might add too, as a journalist covering that and coming out there on several occasions, it's a really fun day.
Thank you.
To be out there.
Glad you enjoy it.
So we appreciate, I know I appreciate what you do.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Milton?
I just wanted to reiterate, we thank you for what you do, everybody out there, all the kids that like to go out there and watch it. It's absolutely wonderful. And then in addition to doing that, you still raise money for charity.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of a win-win for so many people. Thank you for all the efforts that you put forth. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got to close the public hearing, but the public hearing is closed now. Ms. Milton, you've already spoken. There are no further lights. Is there a motion?
I think we're still on.
Can send a gentleman.
I would have.
Okay. I think not, I think.
Oh, here's somebody.
For another item?
Yeah.
For another item? Sure.
This must be our guy.
Agenda, agenda item number 21. My name's Kyle Kelner. I'm the owner of Kelner Salvage and Recycling. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents who wish to be heard on any of these items? If none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
No.
Moving to second to approve the consent agenda. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
19 through 27 are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance on final reading. Item number 28 and 29 will take for one public hearing. 20 is ordinance to create street improvement district 6878 for the purpose of approving North 89th Circle from Burt Street North by grading curving and paving in Portland concrete, cement concrete to fix and define the boundaries of said district to provide for the determination of assessment damages barring protest to the contrary to complete the associated improvements project. And 29 is resolution city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish the petition for improvements of North 98th Circle from Burt Street North within Street Improvement District number 6878 to publish notice of the right to protest the said petition and the said improvements and to mail the said notices to the record property owners of taxable property within the said district.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 28 and 29 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is the next street improvement district that we've been seeing recently in many areas across the city that need it badly, and that would apply to this block as well. This is within the Penny Park Neighborhood Association in my district, and actually is a very small portion of road amongst a cul-de-sac. And these petitions, it looks like has pretty solid support from the surrounding neighbors, about 66% in support of proceeding at this point, and I'm pleased to see they have elected to go with the more permanent solution, which is concrete and curbs and new guttering and things that will make it last longer than, say, the asphalt option. But I will say, I want to make this point today that this is the first step in many steps, as we know, to get this accomplished, much like the other cases we've had. I think that residents don't yet know how much it'll cost and be assessed to each property. So as that comes through the process, we'll want, obviously want to have that information and share that with them and make sure they still have the same majority opinion to move forward. But I will also be making the case on their behalf that the city should be sharing a 50-50 cost share on this project, much like we have in every other street maintenance district that's come through to date, on our current thinking of the city policy that pertains to unimproved streets. We have one, another one on today's agenda in a different phase of approval, number 41, where I would feel the same way. I think it's only fair that we treat them in a 50-50 cost share going forward until we have the broader city policy identified and being implemented across the city. So I wanted to make that point today and look forward to making that case as this continues through the process. And with that, we'll move to approve both item number 28 and 29.
Moving to second to approve numbers 28 and 29. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Oops, Thompson's absent. Mr. President? Yes.
20 and 29 are passed, six to zero. Item number 30, ordinance to establish the Old Town Elkhorn Business Improvement District, BID 6878, under authority of the Business Improvement District Act of Nebraska by statutes for the purpose of providing specific activity, work, and improvements to the Old Town Elkhorn area.
Public hearing on agenda item number 30 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bernard Inambash, Deputy City Attorney. I have worked with the Elkhorn Business Improvement District. Several of their members are here today, and I'm going to ask Mr. Thompson, who's the contact I've worked with primarily as we finalize this. What you have before you is a revised business improvement district from the one that you saw at the end of last spring. The geographic boundaries of the district have been decreased, primarily property from the south was omitted. The budget of the district has been cut substantially from $43,500 to $12,000. We've tweaked how it's assessed, going so that non-residential property and income-producing residential property are the parties that will be assessed. And probably most importantly, we've put a five-year window on this particular business improvement district, giving an opportunity to show some improvement and sell itself, so to speak, to the members of the district. It will not continue beyond that five years without further council action. I'm happy to answer any questions. I figured I'd introduce it, but frankly, call Mr. Thompson and any of the other members up with the BID to talk to you if they have anything they want to add. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
I am Brian Thompson. I'm one of the BID board members, and to slightly.
Your address, please.
What's that?
Address, please.
Okay, 2716 North 206th Street. I live in that BID area, plus I have a business in that BID area also. To give you a little history, you know, we tried to, we looked at this in April, and we came, we were almost ready to go to vote, and there was kind of some concerns from our community about what was being addressed. So we decided to just pull back to make sure these concerns were addressed, and we feel that we've made that. You know, all eight board members have talked to the community, talked to other places, and felt this was a common ground we could go to to help. You know, our primary goal here was to revitalize our infrastructure in Old Downtown Elkhorn. If you've gone down Old Downtown Elkhorn, I could show you 100 pictures of streets, sidewalks caving in. So, you know, it wasn't too good a place. You know, there's a lot of issues where it's safety, public concerns. So a lot of us business and home people got together and say, something has to be addressed here because it's a major problem. And space was a major problem, like parking, this and that. So we have been working with architects and stuff and how to address all these concerns. And we feel that we have a good plan in place to help us, you know, it is going to be an expensive project, but to help us hurt things in fact so we can fund, to go after funds and stuff like that. So that's kind of where we got to today on this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Well, I'm Carl Anderson, 2619 North Main. I'm chairman of our merchants association. I just want to thank you for the approval of things you've given us in the past with our TIF and so forth. Come on down, 206th Street is done, and we're really excited about all the things we're going to do. So we ask you to pass this, if you would, to help us just along the way. It's a long path. Thank you very much. I'd ask you to pass it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Connie Jo Gaytrast. I'm here to represent Enfield's Tree Service, which lies along Park Road.
Yes, your address, please.
The address of the company is 20560 Park Road. I'm also an Elkhorn resident, 808 South 212th Street. I haven't been able to come to some of these meetings, and I fault myself for that. I kind of let some of the other business owners do my fighting for me. So today, I'm here to invite you down to take a look at the new boundaries, so that you could see that south of the railroad tracks, which is where my property is, is industrial. I have no storefront. I have no, and since the way that this is devised is by linear footage, it's a tree care company. It's a large lot to park large trucks. And so this particular tax, the way it's set up, I will have a 15% increase on my property taxes, and I'm not really in the downtown Old Town Elkhorn. Do I love them? Do I support them? I absolutely do. I hang their Christmas things for free. I take them down for free. I do things to improve our area often. I also make a mess up there. It's a tree care company. But I feel like that's a disproportionate amount of tax for my company to have to endure. And I'm willing to help. I'm willing to do something. I also own a small corner house that's on a corner lot just south of the railroad tracks, and so that will be taxed as well. That Enfield's Tree Service does not own that, but my parents, my uncle, and myself own that. So I'm going to get socked all the way, you know, on both sides. I don't know what the solution is. I'm willing to help, but I feel like that's a little bit In fact, I'll probably have more people asking me to do more to improve what I've got down there because it's not going to look pretty. You know what I mean? It's trees. It's mulch. It's not a retail establishment or an eating establishment. It's industrial. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't think so. We will when we get to the portion where our council members can ask questions.
Okay.
All right.
Shall I sit?
Just sit close, just in case someone has some questions for you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just commend the group here for getting as far as you had and for your perseverance in working on this. As you've probably realized at this point, this is the hard part of the process, trying to get business improvement district established like this, and to try and find the consensus amongst property owners, not only on the method of assessment, but also the program of work and how it's going to go forward and share results. And I've always thought that Old Town Elkhorn is a great example of where this can be successful, much like they have been in Blackstone and Dundee and Benson and hopefully other places in the future. My only thought to your concern is, and I throw it out just for your thoughts to the group, I don't think I need you to...
Okay.
...to come to the podium, but for your thoughts, if you haven't thought about it already. Dundee, for example, does linear footage, linear footage assessment, and we had a property owner or two there that was by far the largest property owner, and we made a special accommodation for them in that program so that it wasn't disproportionate, and that kept everybody on board and supportive at the time and certainly in an ongoing fashion and now. So just something to consider if you haven't considered that already. But I would say the only other thing I would observe is that it's really great. You've worked hard on it and tried to drive consensus. That's the best thing to do at this point, and it's hard to do. My only concern now, or I guess cautionary observation I would make, is that I think to drive the consensus, you've made a number of concessions, including the amount of the BID, what it estimated to produce and what that can produce in terms of a program of work. And when you have a sunset of a five-year timeframe on here, that's not a lot of time to show the results I think you want to show, and I think you'll find that twelve thousand dollars a year will go really fast in that respect in terms of all the things you'd like to accomplish. So just a cautionary thing there, but I understand probably the reason why you got there, which is to drive the consensus that you mostly seem to have here today. So I commend you for that work. I also have a question, actually, for Mr. Indenbosch, if you don't mind. It came to my attention today that a person who helps facilitate business improvement districts throughout the city is retiring soon, the billing and the invoice approvals and all the things it takes to make these things go smoothly. So my question to you is, how will that proceed in the future, both for Elkhorn and for the other BIDs? Have we identified another person to be able to do that in the future?
And as you know, the Parks Department, I'm sorry, Bernard Indenbosch, Deputy City Attorney. The Parks Department has long been responsible for collecting, paying the bills, and managing the bills. And you're right, the accountant in the Parks Department, who is responsible at the end of each year for determining the bills, is retiring. I assume that person will be replaced. I haven't spoken to Mr. Bench about it, but I assume the person will be. There's also been some changes within the Parks Department as far as who has some responsibility. There's been a suggestion, and probably will happen over the next couple of months. There'll need to be several meetings where we kind of reteach people how to do it again, something that we had to do a couple of years ago. We certainly had some pitfalls in the last couple of years where we know some things got corrected, and hopefully we won't repeat some of those things. But it's, with each additional BID, it's certainly more responsibility and gets a little more complicated.
Yeah, that's true, and I think it's, that's a very key position to have these go smoothly in the future, which is why I'm making this point, that that person does need to be identified once Elkhorn's established and once others are established too, to make sure they do operate smoothly in the future. In fact, I think we're at the point now where there should be someone within the city structure identified who just does BIDs, now that we have several of them officially in place and more on the way. I think that'd be a really a benefit to all that we're doing throughout the city and encourage these to go smoothly and not have the occasional hiccup we do with, you know, the paperwork or the shuffling of billing and invoicing. So I throw that out for, as an observation also, but one I think that can be resolved, and appreciate Bernard's work on all these too. He's been very helpful in how these work through state law and I'm sure helping Elkhorn and others get to where they are now. So I wanted to thank Bernard for that too. And with that, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. or Ms. Milton?
Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Brian Thompson and Carl Anderson. They've been great and they've worked very, very hard. I think two years ago, two and a half years ago, maybe, was the first meeting. But that area of Elkhorn is really a gem, and we don't, we don't see areas like Elkhorn really west of Seventy-Second Street. But you have just a very unique spot where we can do a Blackstone, a Dundee, and we can do it with a lot of new growth of Elkhorn all around it. But I think it's just a great place for people to come that don't have to drive necessarily all the way down to the old markets. I'd like to think of it as the old market of the West is my vision. And I know it's been a long road, and I know it's going to be, there's a lot more to do. And Connie, I do understand your predicament, and maybe that's something that you could talk to the board about in the future, even if some advertising. I would like to think that anybody participating in this, and when we see, when you see the plans and the vision for what this business improvement district has for downtown Elkhorn, I would like to think it's going to benefit everybody around it and all the business owners. So I would encourage you to work with this board because I think they want, I think they want everybody to succeed and have this benefit everyone as well, and I'm sure would be more than willing to work with you. And I would encourage you to attend, attend those meetings. They are very productive. There's a lot of people involved there in Elkhorn that really truly care. I think most have even been lifelong residents of Elkhorn. So I am looking forward to seeing this happen. I do think I understand some of Councilman Festerson's concerns, that I hope it's not too small right now, but what I'm thinking is, if you just show everybody down there what you can do, what that vision is, you'll be able to expand that, and I'm really looking forward to it. And I know Dr. Thompson is very disappointed that he couldn't be here today because I know he's been working with you on this for so long, but he very, very much supports this. And so with that, I would do a motion to approve if nobody else adds, if we don't have anything else.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. There are no further lights roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty is passed, six to zero. Resolution, item number thirty-one, resolution to attach World Hotel Taxi Refinancing and Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment site located at two-oh-three South Eighteenth Street, which proposed adaptive reuse and conversion of the World Building into a ninety-room boutique hotel. Recommend city participates of the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is a TIF redevelopment project for what has been called the World Building. And as soon as this monitor comes up, so this aerial will show you where we're at. Currently, we are sitting right here at eighteen-nineteen Farnum Street, the courthouse, the Woodman Tower, and what you see shaded in green is the World Building. And then here's another aerial. As you can see, it kind of sits in the shadows, depending on where the sun is shining, of the Woodman Tower. It's an office building. It was the former headquarters of the World Insurance Company, and the developer, who is also here, sitting behind me, Villanova, proposes to do an adaptive reuse and conversion of this building. It has some historic character, and the historic designation is still under consideration. There's still some, several things they have to go through to determine if it really will be able to receive that historic designation, particularly from the federal side. But what they do propose is to convert it into a ninety-room hotel, boutique hotel, that will have some meeting rooms, banquet hall. They do propose a rooftop restaurant and bar, and they do propose to be, to add forty hospitality-related jobs into the area of downtown. This particular project would certainly help support the downtown twenty-thirty master plan in that it calls for revitalization, utilization of a vacant structure. It's going to help preserve a structure that has some historic characteristics. It will also restore some pedestrian activity to this area of downtown, which is kind of bare if you're out in that area. So it will restore pedestrian vitality to the downtown area and add more economic activities to the area. It proposes one-point-nine in TIF use. It has an estimated total project cost of about thirteen-point-six million for TIF-eligible costs of acquisition, rehabilitation, architectural engineering, and some public improvements. So with that, I ask for your approval, and we'll step aside in case the developer would like to say something. The hotel brand, they said I could say something about it, and I think it's already possibly known, is the Curyell Flag of Hilton. So that is what is proposed for this particular building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello. My name is Nirav Shah. I'm a principal with Villanova Development, Councilman and Councilwoman. Thank you for hearing us today. We're very excited about this project. We've been working on this project for almost a year now. We had it under contract with Woodman Insurance. Have just recently contracted with an architectural firm that's working on a project here in Omaha. Their name of the firm is Trivers, so we are starting design work. We're still at ninety rooms and are absolutely working on the design of the rooftop bar as well. And it will be, a lot of times people think of hotels and restaurants as a place where it's only for hotel guests, but the hotels that we're working on, even in other cities, are open to local residents as well. So it will not be a rooftop bar or restaurant just for guests at the hotel.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I want to thank the development team for this wonderful proposal, to show you their level of interest and commitment. They've come here today, joining Mr. McClay, their local partner from Clarity Development from Washington, D.C. and St. Louis. So this is a serious project with a very good team, and I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't mention the opportunity to take a look at the space along Eighteenth Street, which is currently a four-lane street with a large median in between that services Farnum and Douglas, and it terminates at Douglas and it terminates at Farnum. And it would seem to me, if we really want to take an opportunity to activate the pedestrian area and the street front, which appears to be the goals of the downtown master plan and things that planning departments were working on actively, there should be a dialogue with the development team and Public Works and the property owners along Eighteenth to see what the level of interest is in the ability to create additional on-street angle parking, if possible, because it would appear to me, not knowing what the subsurface environment's like, that there is plenty of opportunity on the surface to do those things, and it would help the retail side of your establishment and nearby places too. So good luck to you, and thank you for this project. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-one. No further lights roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-one is adopted, six to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items number thirty-two through forty-one shall be held on a third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item forty-two, ordinance vacating U Street and Sixty-Ninth Street right of way. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, I'm sorry, forty-two. Oh, sorry. Item number forty-two, proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-three, ordinance vacating part of Hillsdale Circle right of way in Wright Subdivision. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-four, ordinance to amend ordinance number four-zero-seven-one-four, declaring necessity requiring private property to the purpose of one-hundred-and-thirty-second Pacific Street intersection improvements. To amend the ordinance to allow city to acquire additional property for the ADA requirements.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-five, ordinance proving redevelopment tax center refinancing loan agreement with Ames Row Houses to implement the Ames Row House Tax Center Refinancing and Redevelopment Project Plan for the project site located at fifty-eight-oh-one Fowler Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-six, ordinance to accept the bid of Marco Technologies for a forty-eight-month lease for the, for a Conoco model ten-fifty-two high-volume digital print system.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-seven, ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Brenda L. Daley and Associates to provide funding for the position of project Safe Neighborhoods Director of Operations.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-eight, ordinance to approve and accept, to approve the acceptance and authorize distribution of the JAG grant to provide funding for law enforcement, personnel, equipment, crime prevention, and education programs.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-nine, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize the distribution of U.S. Department of Justice grant to provide funding for five new sworn Omaha Police Department office hires.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Fifty is ordinance proven the acceptance and authorize the distribution of Department of Justice grant to provide funding for the Omaha Police Department to transition to the national incident-based reporting system.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-one, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the two thousand and sixteen Improving Criminal Justice Response to Sexual Assault, Domestic Violence Dating Violence and Stalking Grant Program Award to support and enhance Omaha's coordinated community response to domestic violence.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-two, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize the distribution of U.S. Department of Justice grant to provide funding for the reduction of gun and gang violence in Omaha neighboring communities.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-three, ordinance to amend section two-dash-two-thirty-eight pertaining to the membership and qualifications of members appointed to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank Board to require the appointment of one member of the city council to serve as non-voting ex-official member of the board.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Chairman of Board of Equalizations, item fifty-four, Chairman of Board of Equalizations and for approval of their plans of assessment, adjustments, and corrections made at their regular meeting held December sixth, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion to approve. Moved and seconded to approve item fifty-four.